Good afternoon. Welcome to the special conference meeting dated for Tuesday, August 11th at 4:00 p.m. The place is East Cleveland City Hall. Madam Clerk, would you call the robe, please?
Counselor King.
Present.
Counselor Martin.
Present.
Counselor Baker.
Present.
Counselor Willer.
Present.
Counselor Thomas.
Present.
Okay, remarks of the public agenda items on...
Oh, please. Ordinance number forty-two fifty-five, that's a problem with it, that's okay, since it just pick or have to learn to put one subject matter, not two subject matters. A child can indicate that, there should be two pieces of legislation there. Then going on to the question. The problem lies in ordinance forty-four fifteen and ordinance requesting an investigation by the Cuyahoga County Prosecutor as to discrepancies of the annexation petitions submitted to the electors, I'll just cut it short. I'm glad to know that you are involved in the prosecutor's because the petitions are blatantly, blatantly wrong. And then if you sit up here and pass something even to, even to consider voting to form a commission to study annexation, you then are contributing to the fraud that's in those petitions. Because number one, the people did not know what they were voting for, I mean, signing for when they signed the petition. They didn't know what they were signing for, annexation or counsel to study or do a, to pass them or what have you. And then at the bottom of the petition says, "to study." Three or four subject matters in there. I ask anyone that may have signed the petition or anyone in here, did you know what you were signing for? No. The answer would be no. You're, "I'm signing for annexation," that's the first thing pops out. It should have been, "We are the electors of the city of East Cleveland, hereby authorize a study to be done by, to appoint a committee to, to do a study of annexation." That's all it should have said. And anyone agrees with that, they don't need to be sitting up here or what have you. That is blatantly wrong and fraud and I hope the prosecutor will do his due diligence. And if he doesn't, I have contacted the Attorney General in reference to this matter. Not only the Attorney General, the United States Attorney General in this matter. That is brought fraud in there, in those petitions. So do what you have to do there.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this?
I would like to say something.
Come on.
State your name.
My name is Hadasha Batiste. I'm a Cleveland Heights resident, but my children will be affected if this goes through because I live on the border and they go to East Cleveland City Schools. I just think we need to give the residents of East Cleveland a fair chance to make an intelligent decision on what they want to do. The people that I have spoke with don't understand the petitions and I think it was explained to them in a, in a way that was meant to confuse them. So I think we owe them a chance to fairly state what we're supporting or what we're doing and give them an opportunity to decide that or make a decision on if they support or not. I feel like it's unfortunate that so many people are trying to do things to confuse the voters and they deserve a right and a chance. I'm paying into the taxes of the East Cleveland school system, so if this merger in fact happens, that hurts my children's future. My oldest son, Anthony Christ, goes to East Cleveland School and he's a shining student there. He's had many opportunities and I'm just afraid that if this happens, not too young the children won't have the same opportunities as now. You know, I believe we can turn this thing around ourselves. I don't think we need help and if more people get the right information to what's at stake here, I believe they will make an informed decision on the matter. I don't think they're being informed correctly and I think it's unjust to do this to confuse voters and the residents. We all have a stake here, I'm invested in the community, I'm not going anywhere. And I just want to say that not only myself, but everyone else should have that fair chance. And if we do it with all the information given to us the right way, I believe people will make different choices of what the things that they have signed. Because I have talked to a lot of people as well and they didn't understand what they were signing for. And they were misled in a lot of ways. And I, and I feel like the people who are involved have a, have a stake here. They have something to gain and like I said, we should give everyone the fair chance to make a decision with all the facts, not just some and half or the twisted truth.
Yeah, totally agree with you. Thank you very much. Okay, is, is anyone else here to speak? Anyone up here? Hearing that, Madam Clerk?
Ordinance number forty-two dash fifteen. An ordinance authorizing the submission to the vote of the electors of the city of East Cleveland, Ohio, of a proposed amendment to section twenty-three of the charter of the city of East Cleveland to provide that the Director of Law and the Director of Finance are appointed by the mayor with confirmation by at least three-fifths of the council and the Director of Law and Director of Finance can only be removed by the mayor with confirmation by at least three-fifths of the council in declaring an emergency for the preservation of the public peace, health, and welfare of the residents of the city of East Cleveland. Requested by Counselor Barbara J. Thomas, sponsored by Counselor Nathaniel Martin.
Yes, Ms. Gell. Please, let me get out.
This is your, uh, next question. It's your pleasure.
I will, um...
Who's this?
This is my sponsor.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
That's, that's all right.
Counselor Martin.
Yes, previously, we had this on the ballot and we lost by about a hundred votes, Barbara. We had about seventy-five votes. And what we're doing is trying to level the playing field here. If the Director of Law be hired or fired and the finance person, it neutralizes the field. What we've observed all the years I've been doing this is that they lean toward the mayor because he has the power to hire, to fire and hire. So this gives us somewhat of a, a level playing field from the standpoint of three-fifths of us have to concur and that kind of thing. So I wanted to get this on the last election in 2013, but we waited too late. So the timing right now is perfect. So it gives us some say in the situation. Let the people decide. It's for the people, by the people, of the people, let the people decide. Thank you.
Mr. Chair. Again, I support this ordinance based on the fact that the Charter is saying that the law director and the finance director work for the people. That has not been shown to be correct. Every time that something is brought to the law director or finance director, they hesitate on dealing with legislation or they say, "I have to talk to the mayor about the legislation." And in essence, they're fearing for their job. They're, and I've heard many of the law directors and the finance directors say, "The mayor is my boss." And the mayor is not the boss, the people is the boss. The people is our boss and should be recognized as such. So before, when I got on champion, this was under forty-eight and we lost by seventy-five votes, I think the people were not really, started kind of late campaigning for it, but I think that was great that seventy-five, we lost by seventy-five. And I think going after it again would show a greater number. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Madam, Mr. Chair, point of order on this, this, we skipped into this, we skipped into discussion, it had to be a proper sponsorship and a, and a proper second, so if we could go back and do that process so that we won't, we won't miss any...
Oh, motion.
No motion.
Yeah. Madam Clerk, I sponsor ordinance forty-two fifteen and move for its adoption. Second.
Move second.
All right.
Any other discussion?
No, we...
No discussion.
I support this question. You gave... Counselor King.
I'm sorry.
You see my statement?
Forty-two fifteen. Forty-two fifteen and I asked the clerk to print out from the Charter what it is counsel is charged with doing, what is our responsibility as councilman, and she, she gave me this big, big document. So I'd like to give, to pass those now to everyone. And basically, the reason I asked for that, the way, the way I understand our responsibility and the mayor's responsibility is that the mayor is to run the day-to-day operations of the city. And where to legislate appropriately, the two positions at hand are not elected positions. They will fall under the jurisdiction of the day-to-day operation of the city. I, I personally have no problem with, and I know they do this at highest level of government when the president picks someone for a position and then he gets vetted. So I would have no problem with that, but the mayor, I believe, should have the authority to terminate these positions as he see fit.
Mr. Chair.
And I, I would go back to, and I don't want to bring up any sore points, but we had that same issue in our office and, I mean, it just, if you can imagine the turmoil had that not been allowed, how, how do you then work with that person? I mean, it just, so that's my, that's my reservation with the legislation as it is. And then it doesn't, when I, when I go through the document, it doesn't rewrite, it starts talking about a public health position, that position, and then it doesn't say anything more about it. So I think it needs to be worded a little better and I would move that the mayor have the authority to terminate.
Okay. You can't do it.
Thank you.
To move here. Okay. Let me say this. The operative word is legislative. There are several municipalities where the finance director and maybe the, the law director is elected. And you can change whatever through legislation. This body speaks through legislation. So therefore, if we have a designated area in which we want to change, as you say, the mayor does the day-to-day operation, but we put in the policies, we put in legislation, we put in rules and regulations and we change it. And therefore, what I am saying, that right now, we have had over the years trouble with dealing with finance directors and law directors.
Yep.
We have not been able to get through and have a law director or finance director be impartial and do exactly what is their specific job. And that means that going through the process, if you ask the law director to do something or you change something or put in an ordinance that is not conducive to the mayor's will, then they will change it. And given a prime example, my colleague, Mr. Nathaniel Martin, wrote an ordinance and sent the ordinance up to the law prosecutor. It has not yet come down or been completed. Now, that's been several months ago. And he, and he has asked several times that this law director take this into her job and do her job, and it has not happened. And no, I do not agree in this about counsel. If counsel don't know what to do after a certain period of time, then we maybe need some more training. And I don't mean that reflectively on anyone. I'm just saying that the mayor knows what he's supposed to do, the counsel knows what they're supposed to do, and basically, we are legislators. And legislators do what they're supposed to do in far as it becomes law. So now, I would suggest that we move along if we can, unless there's somebody else...
I want to speak on that. I understand wanting to have influence and control over what's going on in your administration, but I believe that it is also a managed tool for the administrator to be able to have a person realize if you don't do your job before, if you can't keep your job. And to build relationships and say, "Well, I got a good relationship with counsel, I don't give the mayor say, I'm gonna do what I want to do." But if we're not dealing with that individual day-to-day. So I see that the hiring process should be vetted and approved by counsel before the mayor gets to hire anybody. Terminate the individual, anything can happen, anything can happen. The mayor should have to go through the body to terminate someone. And I think that if we do the vetting the right way and do our due diligence on our part, we should know who's going in that job anyway, because they can't get it unless they come through us as well.
Well, Mr. Vice President, I want to say to you, with all due respect, over the years, that has not taken place. The, and I think I've given examples and I don't think we're trying to take away anything from any of the mayor's power. I think that basically what we're doing is trying to make sure that the people have a say-so in this and if they say no, then that is it. They said no before and to give a prime example, I love giving examples, to give a prime example, we put the, on the ballot, the mayor's salary. The people turned it down and it took several months before that salary was conducive to the will of the people. So it just depends on how you look at it, Mr. Vice President. So I'm not trying to take anything away from the mayor, he has all the power, but the body, the body that is looking at this is saying, he has not dealt with this area in all good faith. I'm saying that. So we can, we move on.
We can move on.
Yes, we can move on.
You're good. Thinking yourself is good.
I understand, I understand what it is that you're trying to accomplish with this. I don't think it's gonna quite accomplish what you want to do. I think it's from a managerial perspective, it's gonna cause more issues than it's going to solve. Now, if it were an elected position, then that would be different, but because it's a higher position, it's from a managerial, it's, it's not gonna, you're not gonna be able to accomplish what you want to accomplish, simple as that.
Well, nothing beats a fail, nothing beats a failure, but a try.
That's good. Call the robe.
Okay.
Call the robe, please, clerk.
Counselor King.
Yay.
Counselor Martin.
Yay.
Counselor Baker.
Yay.
Counselor Willer.
Nay.
Counselor Thomas.
Yay.
Yes. Yes. That is facing ordinance number...
Forty-four dash fourteen.
Forty-four dash fifteen.
Forty-four fifteen. An ordinance requesting an investigation by the Cuyahoga County Prosecutor as to the discrepancies of the annexation petitions submitted to the East Cleveland Council Office on July twentieth, two thousand and fifteen, and declaring an emergency for the public
Mr. Chairman?
Uh, it's by you.
Yes.
It's your pleasure.
I sponsor ordinance forty-four fifteen and move for its adoption.
Move second.
And I'd like to say something about this.
Don't come asking.
Second.
Move second. Any discussion?
Yes. This is the ordinance about the petitions, which has been somewhat contentious. If you look at the petitions, you'll know that there's irregularities, discrepancies, forgerys possibly, borderline on fraud. I've had the opportunity to look at the petitions. There's language missing, there is a section where it talks about felony that's missing, there were attachments to the, to these petitions. When we checked with the Board of Elections, they said that all they do is verify the signatures. So the process should be to go to the county prosecutor and if we don't get resolved there, we'll go to the Ohio Attorney General and if, whatever the case may be. In all my years in government, as an elected official, sixteen years now, I've never seen so botched up petitions in my life. Okay. I mean, they're, they're, they're whole. Okay. And you can see write-overs and you cannot attach something to it to cover up your mistakes. Now, there's a number of mistakes and I'm gonna go out on them and say, they're gonna be thrown out. Okay? So we'll see what Tim McGinnity has, will do. And if that is not sufficient, we'll take it to the next level. Okay? You gotta do the thing right and you gotta be honest. And these weren't done right. I know people approached me and I'll just share this with the public, some people got paid fourteen dollars, some people got paid fifteen, this is what they told me, to circulate these petitions. Okay? Some signatures, they start out in July and then it's just, I get it, where they end in September, when they start in July. I mean, the petitions are questionable to say the least. So we need to investigate and we have Counselor President investigative powers that she will talk about, but there's something wrong with them. We need to do something about it. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I also want to...
Hold on, I'm sorry.
I want to read this into the record.
Can I do that before you move?
Oh, you have to.
I would like to read into the record, section one, pursuant to the authority granted under O R C, Ohio Revised Code, seven oh nine, that twenty-four, and thirty-five nineteen, that oh six, the council here by invalidate the petition for annexation for failure to comply with O R C thirty-five oh one, thirty-eight D E one, and is it I N J? Thank you. Thank you, Brett Yildig.
Thank, thank you, Counselor President. We, we're dealing with a serious time in our city, a time where we have to either sink or swim. And I believe, you know, as a, as a lifelong resident of the city, honesty will carry this city to the next level, transparency will also carry this city to the next level. I just believe that when you do things in fairness, God will reward those people who act in accordance with the residency and the people in which they represent. I really, really have a problem with the annexation, I am totally against it. I came out first at Kevin Conwell's meeting and Jeff Johnson's meeting and I told them that I would not stand for an annexation of the city of East Cleveland. Then to follow came colleagues of mine and residents and business leaders and all the sort and the people of the city of Cleveland. I commend Councilman Balensky, I commend Councilman Zach Reed, and I also commend Councilman T.J. Dow for stepping out against the annexation proposal. The East Cleveland community deserves better and we deserve leadership that is reflective of where we're going as a city. Thank you.
Any other, any other comments?
And I just want to make it very clear on this, we're, oh, I'm sorry.
I just, I need to say this. I was at McGregor home and I think it was, was April, when they had the big meeting and it was five, six hundred people, I was there. And this is what was said, and I know Lexi Communication has it on video, that this was a study, supposed to be a study. You were there. Not annexation. So the people want to see it. We need to deal with this situation because it's dangerous. Thank you.
My, 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 my question, statement is, you said it earlier, Counselor, is that if Tim McGinnity don't do what we think he should do, we'll go to the next step. So what is, so the answer is, until's the answer we want to hear or is it the answer just what's right?
What's right.
Okay, so what's right mean, obviously, what we want to hear. So then what, 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 what level of government would it take for us to say, "Okay, that's right, you said it doesn't come from him, we go to the state," so on and so on.
There, there should be two separate situations going here. There's a, there's an allegation of fraudulent activity within the petitions and then there was a statement made by Pat McDonald from the Board of Elections stating that the ball is in our court to invalidate or validate.
Yes, yes.
So did we just invalidate?
Yes.
The petition submitted by the circulators?
Yes.
That were fixed to that petition and then our, our legislative authority is calling for investigating inquiry through the county. Are we doing that as well?
Yes.
Because it's two separate things happening here.
Yes.
It's just not, you know, the county can say one thing, we just invalidate it, but we want more serious action is what you're asking, stating.
Yes.
Okay. Then that's what's on the table.
All right, clear that?
Yes.
Also, I just wanted to say one more thing. It's not just about annexation, it's about the fact that when we talked to the auditors and we also heard from the mayor, the auditor was saying to us there were no more options available. The mayor has projected one option and that was annexation. And we, as the council here, engaged the services of Buckley and King, who is a big law firm in the city of Cleveland. And they are saying that they're willing, and they take our case pro bono and are going out and look for more options. And they're bringing in consultants to deal with that. And we will be meeting with King and Buckley. And I applaud this council for setting boundaries and not just going along to get along. And that means that we're not satisfied with not having but one option. And now, we've heard that the auditor wants to come in and do some more investigating himself. When we had asked... When we had asked for that before, he told us it was not logical to go out to the bond market, because it would not do us justice. So let's, what this council is doing is trying to find more options until we have depleted all of that is out there for us. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Call the roll.
Before you call the roll, you know, maybe I will, the mayor, what he's saying about...
Come on.
Maybe we got a motion, that's all. We got the majority votes.
Okay, let's go.
Council Wheeler, read one more section. We need to read section two, and then we'll call it yours.
Mr. Vice President?
Why, my reading? Yes.
Would you mind if I had a comment off the floor?
I say yes.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity. Certainly, council wishes to do something here today, and that's fine. Just know that the Ohio law lays out a certain process for exploring annexations. And this community has followed that process. A couple of short weeks ago, there was a petition submitted with more than a thousand signatures on it, many of them valid. And we talked about the fact that signature, those signatures represented people's desire to enter into this conversation and explore annexation. We had conversations with people at the doors, people signed that petition, and it was submitted. Just two short weeks ago, council president committed to follow through with this process. And we always know that, can't always count on what somebody says, and we appreciate that. What we have here is a petition signed by upwards of thirteen hundred people who are registered to vote in the city of Cleveland. There were five hundred sixty ballot signatures required for this purpose. We got eight hundred something ballot signatures. The Board of Elections has already reviewed and has certified these signatures as valid for this purpose. The Board of Elections is the place that has the signature of each registered voter in the city of East Cleveland, not only in the city of East Cleveland, but throughout Cuyahoga County. They reviewed it. Those signatures that did not appear to be the signature of the registered voter that was valid for this purpose were not counted. Those signatures that did appear to the Board of Elections to be valid for this purpose were counted. And under the state law, there were enough signatures on that petition, valid signatures for this purpose to be counted. So to ask another body to look into the signatures that were already verified by the Board of Elections, which determines the valid signatures for all purposes, whether it's a candidate petition for each of you who was running for city council or for me who ran as mayor, or an issue petition for something like this. The Board of Elections is the place that does it. So if council wants to take this a little bit further, do we understand that? We just ask that you, at some point, council as a body, listen to the thirteen hundred East Cleveland registered voters who asked you to do something. And recognize that that thirteen hundred voters
You let the criminal talk this long?
Is more than any member of council has received in any election. So... I know you're going to vote, but I understand you...
You'll go. Should've never let him speak.
You got to order, and you're not going to... No, you've got to let him talk.
No, we do not have to let you do anything.
Mr. Vice President?
Now, we have given you an opportunity...
Should've never let him speak.
You copied to this, but we got the motion on the table.
So then, the petitions are honest, because the day-to-day operations...
And we're not, we're not talking about the petition.
And he's still talking.
We're talking about the circulators, Mr. Mayor. But let's get, let's move on.
You should've never let him speak.
You got to call for the vote. Go ahead.
Council Thomas?
Yay.
Council Martin?
Yay.
Council Baker?
Yay.
Council Wheeler?
Yay.
Council King?
Yay.
For section two, the council hereby directs the law director who passes today's corporate council, representing the legislative authority of the city, to immediately submit a written request to the Cuyahoga County Prosecutor's office to open formal investigations to the creation, circulation, and submission of the petition for annexation for possible violations of law and to prosecute any and all violations discovered as a result of such formal investigation.
All right. Time to move back over to Council President.
Thank you.
Madam President, I move into your chair.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you.